Before we start, people, if you have any electronic devices, could you please put them on vibrate or turn them off? Thank you. And we're going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask if there's any conflict of interest amongst council members here tonight. Seeing none, okay, can I have the adoption of the published agenda, please? Councillor Bondi and Councillor Van Endall, all in favor? It's carried, and Rob, I guess you can carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 5.1, adoption of minutes. That the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 1st, 2019 be adopted is circulated.
Have a mover. Councillor Bowman and Deputy Mayor Malash, any questions? All in favor? It's carried.
5.2, that the minutes of the special council meeting of February 11th, 2019 be adopted is circulated.
A mover, please. Councillor Garan and Councillor Verbeek, any questions? All in favor? It's carried.
5.3, that the minutes of the special council meeting of March 25th, 2019 be adopted is circulated.
Have a mover, please. Councillor Bowman and Councillor Bjorkman, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's carried.
And 5.4, that the minutes of the special council meeting of April 2nd, 2019 be adopted is circulated.
Mover, please. Councillor Bowman and Councillor Van Endall, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's carried, and we'll go right to public presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first presentation this evening under 6.1 of the agenda is Mr. Kevin McShan from the Ontario Chamber of Commerce. He's here to speak with council this evening concerning the Discoverability Network project. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. McShan.
First of all, thank you, Rob, and thanks to Councillor Verbeek for the invitation to speak with you all this evening. Just before I get started, I want to know what the Discoverability Network is. So, the Ontario government wanted to create something to help eradicate unemployment for people with disabilities, so they've come up with the Discoverability Network. What it is, in basic terms, is a website. If you go on the website, it's called Windsor.Discoverability.Network. You make your profile. If you're a business, if you're a business looking to hire someone with a disability, you make a profile, then we match you with people that have disabilities that are looking for work. And obviously, if you're a job seeker, it works the opposite way. Now, I'm going to go through the presentation, and then at the end of the presentation, I'll go through what the ask is of council after the presentation is over. So, these are just basic statistics as to tell you why making a business fit, why it's important to hire people with disabilities. As you can see, in a recent survey, 77% of small and medium-sized businesses have told the Ontario Chamber they're willing to hire people with disabilities, but they don't know where to start. So, the Discoverability Network was created in part to eradicate unemployment, as I said, of people with disabilities. As you can see, 50% of people with disabilities across the province have at least graduated high school. 40% of them have at least some sort of post-secondary training. And 50,000 students across the province have some sort of college or university degree. When you go on the website, this is the sign in. The website itself for the project was originated from the Disability Services Department at Huysen University. It's currently run in six municipalities across the province. I'm proud to say Windsor and Essex was the first one where this project was rolled out and introduced, and I was the first regional ambassador hired for the project. These are just a look at some of the local partners that are a part of the network. So, all of these organizations service people with disabilities and from an employment perspective. So, the regional partners in there have uploaded their clientele into the system as a job seeker database for employers to pick from. When you go on the site, this is the homepage of the site. So, when you go on Windsor.Discoverability.Network, this is the first thing you see. If you want to use the site, you click this button, this yellow button that says log in and sign up right there, and you can use the site. When you use the site, it's going to give you a six-step roadmap on how to make it easier to hire people with disabilities. It gives you suggestions on interview questions, how to ask the appropriate questions when you're interviewing someone with a disability, how to find talent. Obviously, they want you to use the Discoverability Network portal, and it gives you suggestions on interview questions, suggestions on accommodations, and how to make it easier to hire people with disabilities. This just goes through the appropriate way to interview someone when you're talking about hiring someone with a disability. This talks about accommodations. The stat we use at the Ontario Chamber is that 80% of accommodations for people with disabilities cost less than $500, and can be as simple as the rest, height of the desk, the use of assisted software, or a headset to make it easier to hire people with disabilities. Again, this just goes through general statistics on why it's important to hire people with disabilities. This talks about productivity, the low turnover rate when you hire people with disabilities, higher attendance in health and safety is also higher as well. So, this just gives you a look at resources once you use the site, what you'll see when you go on the site. So, this is a look at the six municipalities that the project is currently running. Windsor, as I said, is the first one, and then you can see the other five there as well. So, this is, once you sign up for the site, there's a check in on there that's called onboarding, it just tells you how to use the site once you sign up for it. So, this just goes through the algorithm of the site. So, once an employer posts a job on the site, what happens is it's emailed to everyone that fits the qualifications based on what are their regulars, so it matches you automatically through the system. And these are just a look at the 10 business organizations that are associated with the project. And just before I play the video associated with this, the ask from council tonight is to help us schedule like a community outreach event, which would allow businesses and job seekers to take advantage of the site, as sort of like a community meeting or a community event that allows people to take advantage of the resources of the site. And I'm going to play the video for you. Okay. There? Maybe? No? It's on my stick. All right. There we go. It's pretty.
Yeah, I'm sure. We're here. This video is here.
Showcase.
Oh, that one? Oh, is it under this?
Yeah, it's been showcasing it at the bottom.
All right, the very bottom.
Bottom. There you go. The volume up?
For the last few years, we've really focused on hiring people with disabilities. We see it as an untapped market of great potential to hiring some really strong talent.
Denica has been with us, working in various areas of the operation. She has a reputation of a very hard worker. You show her something once, and you don't have to show her again. It's very easy to communicate with her. You'd be amazed how much you can communicate, body language, simple gestures, treating people with respect.
An employee with a disability is like anyone else. Some are high performers, and some are not. They're extremely engaged. They don't show up late. They don't take sick days. It can be small things, or it can be huge things. All of that different perspective is what brings innovation to the workplace.
I had problems with gross motor skills, even fine motor skills. I couldn't pick up a pencil. I couldn't keyboard. There was a time when I perceived that as a risk. I don't do that anymore, thanks to the people that I work with.
The percentage of employees with disabilities is actually highest amongst our senior leadership than it is at any other level in the organization.
We know statistically more and more people are going to be living with episodes of disability.
We're not doing this out of the goodness of our hearts. We're not doing this as a favor to anybody. We're doing this because it makes sense from a business perspective. Results that we can measure, like profitability, employee engagement, client satisfaction, better safety records, all those things are tied to hiring people with disabilities. What is the barrier? Why are you not hiring people with disabilities? And really, the resounding answer came back, "I'm willing to try it, but I have no idea where to find these people." I think the Discoverability Network is an amazing tool for employers of any size, whether you're small, medium, or large. One of the great benefits is the magnet platform, which allows candidates to self-identify as having a disability, which is revolutionary for organizations that are truly looking to recruit specifically from employees with disabilities. This is a great way to identify them and find the talent that you're looking for. I often get asked, "How did I get into this?" Or, "What's my motivation? Is there someone in my family, or do I have a disability?" And the answer is no. For me, I see this as a great way for me to win over my competition. It's truly a business decision.
Get off your butt and hire someone with a disability. Just hire one. You'll look back and think that's one of the best decisions I've ever made, for sure.
Rob, does this computer have internet or no?
Yes, yeah, it should have internet access.
Yeah, I just want to show you the site itself, so you have an idea of... So, the website is... Well, I'm going to go through the benefits of self-declarating for you. When businesses or job seekers self-declare as having a disability on the site, it puts them through a specialized recruiting tool to tell employers that use the system to hire, that they're specifically looking to hire people that have a disability. So, when you log in, this is the first thing you see. When you click log in and sign up, but I'll just do it quickly, it's going to ask you, "Have you heard about the network?" But all of the regional partners are listed. And then it's going to ask you to log in. I'm just going to... So, when you log in, this is the dashboard that comes up. You can see everything provincially that's going on with the network. You can also see what's going on locally here in Windsor and Essex as part of the social media campaign for the project. Here is where you can make a profile of your business, and the more information you tell the system about your business, the better matches that you'll get for people that are looking to use your business to find work. So, this tells you everything that's going on with the network and the line communications. And this is where employers will have most, spend most of their time when they use the website. This is where you post jobs. You can see how many job applicants have read or seen your jobs. You can see how many apply, and you can also go through resumes of the people who apply through this system as well. Community messages allows any business that uses the site to tell everyone that's using this site, the job seeker, or the business that they have a job posted coming up, something about their business. They can all put it in the community messages portion of the website, and it'll allow them to stay up to date with their business. This is just the loading module tool. Sometimes the system and the website will post videos for employers to get them more up to date on how to interact with people with disabilities. So, that is there. The media section of the website just allows you to put any social media or any media component about your business that you want people to know once they look up your business on the website. And the last part of this is just, if you have any questions, the support section of the website is where you go. And the settings is just the settings of your account if you have to change anything. So, one of the, again, the ask for city council would be for us to work together to create sort of a community event, so that businesses and job seekers can use the benefits of the website. And with that, I'll thank you for your time and take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was a very, very good presentation. First of all, I'm going to ask for a motion to receive the presentation. Councillor Bondi and Councillor Bjorkman, and now we're going to open it up for questions. Please. Any questions? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our presenter. Thank you, Kevin, for coming forward. I was recently on the Accessibility Committee. Councillor Bjorkman is carrying that torch now for our committee, but I think it's great, and I'm hoping council does consider a partnership with you, and we can host a community forum. And I would love for businesses in our area to get an invite to that forum, and for residents in our area to get an invite to that forum as well. I have a teenage daughter, and she had a job interview this weekend at Tim Hortons, and there was a lot of anxiety in the house all weekend because of that job interview. So, I think what you're doing is really good, because you're removing some of that anxiety around getting a job, right? If there are people in our community that want to be employed, and there are businesses that want to employ them, you're bringing that together, right?
That's the idea of the tool. Yeah.
Yeah, I love it. I think it's great. And saying, "Hey, self-identify, and there are people out there, we can make matches." So, I wholeheartedly support it. I'm interested in you keeping notes about what are other barriers you're finding in the county. For example, in Windsor, this may work a little easier, because there's transportation. And for us out here in the county, it may not work, it may be a little bit harder. For example, if somebody lives in McGregor, and they found a match in Essex, getting there might be one of those hurdles. So, I'm interested in that information.
I was anticipating that question. So, this website is simply a job matching tool, so there isn't any financial intent for, excuse me, businesses or job seekers to use this tool, but we see the same problem in Windsor, because I'm sure you're all familiar with Hand2Trant, which is their main transportation hub for people with disabilities. And certainly, transportation and eliminating those barriers is the biggest part to making sure that they're able to use the matches. So, Essex Community Council is a regional partner for the project, and that's certainly something that they've tried to bring to the attention, certainly. Out here in the county, I know that transportation is a problem. So, one of the good things about working with regional partners is that each one of those organizations have job coaches, and then if the person was to use a service provider to utilize the site, then they would work with that particular individual to eliminate those barriers, and then, but the site itself is just a job matching tool, but transportation is certainly an issue that would have to be overcome if you were to use the site to get right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, thank you very much for coming and seeing us and sharing this presentation with us. We have many people in our community who can take advantage. I know with Essex Community Living right now, they have a program, and I see that you work with Windsor Community Living.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought, I was anticipating that question, too. So, Community Living Essex is in the process of signing what's called a memorandum of understanding that joined the network, so they're just in a process of finalizing that to become a regional partner.
So, to that, what I look forward to is having a meeting with our stakeholders and getting ahold of our BIA, our Chamber in Harrow, Essex Community Living, and bringing those groups together as well as businesses, because their reach is far. We've got websites that they have that can, you know, link onto yours, find a better way to make it more and more interactive and easier for people to approach. So, I think I see a lot of benefit to it, and I'm sure we'll approve having a meeting and getting everyone together.
Well, I appreciate that. And one thing I should tell you is any business that uses the site, or any service provider that uses this website, they'll get the aggregate data back. What that means is if they post a job on the site, the site will prepare a report for you that tells you how many people have used the website to access your jobs, or how many job seekers have looked at those, the job posters that you're putting on the site. So, you'll get the aggregate data back once you sign up as a business on the website.
Anybody else from council?
Okay, we had a motion, all in favor of the motion. Thank you very, very much for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Yes, through you, your worship. Mr. O'J, is this where I make the motion to support the...
Oh, you want to make the motion?
...making a partnership with the Discoverability Network for a community forum, as requested?
Okay, you want to make that motion?
Yes, I do, please.
And second by Councillor Bondi. All in favor of that motion? Go ahead.
Thank you. Just through you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is like to cover the cost of renting, say, the Shaheen Room, kind of like the cost? What do you want to encapsulate, Councillor Verbeek, in the motion?
Through you, your worship. I'd like to see us work together with the Discoverability Network, you know, with, of course, perhaps the Shaheen Room or a facility. All the groups that Councillor Bjorkman was suggesting we reach out, and possibly even using some of our social media to do a community event to inform people about this wonderful network.
And this is why we have, I'll give you an idea of how a community event would go. So, we would bring representatives from the Ontario Chamber of Commerce, and it would help businesses sign up, and job seekers upload their resume at the event, and so that we could also show them how to use it and sign up at the same time. So, that would, and the Chamber would provide the computers and everything you would need to sign up, if that would be something you would require to make this event as successful as possible. So, I just wanted to...
Here, Kevin, any other question? Okay, on that motion by Ken, Councillor Verbeek, all in favor of that motion? It's carried. Doug, did you, did you want to say anything on that at all? Sorry. Sorry, I left your rate out. I had nothing to say, but I'll be the person making contact, so we can get something set up.
Sounds good, Doug.
Sorry, Doug, for leaving you out. Okay, so...
They're here together with their solicitor, Frank Sololi, in connection with rezoning application 6954.
application 6954-6 concession. This is also in conjunction with Planning Report 2019-18. And through you, Mr. Chair, my understanding is our policy planner, Jeff Watson, will firstly present this report, and then we'll hear from the delegations. For council's information, the proposed motion in the agenda is to receive the report together with the presentation and additional correspondence. And if council chooses to support the recommendations in the planning report, that planning be accordingly directed to come back with the appropriate zoning bylaw and the appropriate site plan control agreement prior to the issuance of any building permits. Thank you, Rob. Jeff, if you can go ahead with the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is the application for rezoning by Victor and Deborah Amber, and I will be seeking direction from council as to which way to go in terms of a bylaw, if a bylaw is approved. It concerns the property of 6954-6 concession, which is just west of Arner, and it's a 52-acre by 800-foot frontage, 2,200-foot-deep parcel. It's, the north half is tilled land, the south half is a mix of vacant land and a woodlot. In the woodlot are 26 containers, shipping containers, containing fireworks, commercial-grade and consumer-grade fireworks. The purpose of the rezone application is to basically permit the retention of, or the use of the land for the storage of fireworks, okay? It's not related to the containers themselves. The containers are grandfathered by the, having been there before we changed the zoning bylaw to restrict shipping containers on properties. So it's really about what's in them, as opposed to them being there. The property is owned A1.1, and it's designated agriculture in the official plan. The A1.1 zoning is a broad, general agricultural zoning. It permits a wide range of agricultural uses, and it also permits agricultural support uses, like, you know, farm equipment rentals or farm repair facilities and so on. It is pretty much the dominant zoning in that area, with the exception of a few properties which are owned rural residential. When Mr. Amber applied for the rezoning, in my consultation with him, the first thing I did was look at the official plan for the town of Essex. And the official plan, you know, for the reasons outlined in my report and discussed at the last public meeting concerning this, opens the door for council to approve this rezoning. The next thing, of course, I looked at is the provincial policy statement, and that is what sets directions for council, which council shall have reference to when they consider rezoning applications or official plan amendments. It also opens the door for council to approve this. One of the things that's rather ironic is that it contains certain policies for the protection of agricultural lands. It says basically that measures must be taken to mitigate any impact in agricultural lands when you're introducing use which is sort of alien to the area. And it doesn't say anything about protection to rural residents and rural properties. Rather ironic. I think from a local administrative and council point of view, though, we do pay attention to the concerns of residents. And 28 people showed up to discuss this matter at the public meeting last Monday. The concerns really relate to the use and the concerns of what kind of impact that use might have, the storage of fireworks. One of the things I want to basically look at with council is what's permitted under the A1 zoning, and how does that compare with fireworks storage? The A1 zoning, as they say, permits tilled agricultural operations, fruit farms, all sorts of different kinds of combinations of agricultural produce and output. It also permits agricultural support uses, like, as they say, like a farm repair, farm equipment repair operation. It permits, he could grow cannabis on this property, he could actually have a mushroom farm on this property. All of these uses are uses which are permitted as of right under the current zoning, and all of those uses have the same kinds of concerns that people would have with the storage of fireworks. For example, for cannabis operations and mushroom farms, we have setback requirements. You know, they have to be a setback a certain distance from residential properties. And there are, you know, residential properties in this area. And I think in the terms of the fireworks, they have to be treated exactly the same way. We've always taken the position that separation is not fences that are good neighbors, in this case, it's separation that are good, that makes a good neighbor. And so you want to make sure that this is adequately setback from other properties and the impacts it might create. The other issue is the safety aspect. And I looked at the, basically, as they said, they have a federal license for this property for the storage of fireworks under Natural Resources Canada, which sets explosive facility guidelines and mandates. And it's quite strict. For example, you have to have a gated entrance. At that entrance, you have to have facilities where people can store a lighter, for example. Anything that might cause harm has to be stored at the gate before you even go into the property. It requires, for example, that overhead wiring cannot be located within 15 meters of the building. So electrical service has to go underground within 15 meters of the building. It has requirements for the construction of the building, obviously non-flammable, a great degree of fire resistance. It even has regulations which govern how you heat the building. You have to, if you have a, like a propane furnace, for example, or a gas furnace, you can't have an opening between the fire, basically the furnace room and the storage drill. That's not permitted. A switch box, for example, for your electrical system, has to be located outside, either in a separate building or in some sort of manner in which it's basically isolated from the storage facility. So there are a lot of provisions in that which basically establish a high standard for storage. So from a planning point of view, when you look at the zoning, you look at the comparable uses that are permitted, you look at the fact that really to mitigate impacts, distance separation is the key. And also, when you look at the guidelines and mandates of the federal licensing provisions, I'm of the opinion that it's acceptable as a permitted use of this location. But what I am recommending to council is that the zoning bylaw be basically done in such a way that this is added as a supplementary use. In other words, the A1.1 zoning is maintained, this is added, basically the storage of fireworks is a supplementary use added on top of that. I've recommended, as you'll see in the report, setback provisions from the lot lines to ensure that the building is well setback from any other properties that might be impacted by this. I'm also recommending site plan approval. And it's my opinion, with the rezoning structured in this way, with site plan approval and with the regulations of the Natural Resources Canada mandates, that is adequate to basically provide a facility which is reasonable and appropriate for this site. The other option I've left with council, though, is that, you know, we know, I know it's controversial, and I know that there are a lot of people who are in opposition to this, and of course, I don't know the position of council on this. The other option I have left council is that under the Planning Act, you can rezone a property as a temporary use for a period of up to three years. So basically, what you'll be doing is you'd recognize the status quo. You'd basically rezone it to what it is for three years, and at the end of that three years, it doesn't become non-conforming, it must cease, it must go. That would give Mr. Amber the opportunity to find another location appropriate for his needs. And that's, as they say, that's the other option opposed to council. My recommendation, though, is to approve it according to what I've already stated there.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to, from council to Jeff, if any counselors have any questions for Jeff. Seeing Deputy Mayor Malash.
Thank you, through you, your worship, to Mr. Watson. So again, can you repeat what you, I know the one is, you're suggesting that you would allow the storage of fireworks on this property, but not rezone it?
Through, Mr. Mayor, my recommendation is basically, basically under our zoning bylaw, you have the stated zoning for the property, but there's a section where you can add a supplementary use, which is unique to that property, so it would be a site-specific add-on use. It would not take away that the agricultural zoning would simply be added on to that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our policy planner, Jeff Watson. If council were to go ahead and zone this commercial right now, and Mr. Amber chose to move in three, four years, that property still remains commercial? Is that correct?
Through, Mr. Mayor, no, it's not being zoned commercial. It would retain the agricultural zoning, and the storage of fireworks would be added as a single site-specific supplementary use. So if the use ceased, it would have to revert back to whatever storage uses would be permitted under the agricultural zoning. It's not, wouldn't go commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Verbeek.
Through you, your worship. And so then, say, Mr. Amber, you know, sold the property in two years, it just then remains A1.1, the agricultural zoning, and that supplementary that you suggested is gone?
No, that's, no, the zoning would stay unless council changed it. Say, for example, Mr. Amber did move after a few years, and the zoning remained with that supplementary clause, council has every right to come back and say, take it away.
Any other questions? Counselor Vanndel.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Watson. I saw that there's a 900, and you mentioned a 900-foot setback for homes. Would that apply to any new homes built on surrounding properties, as long as this, if we approve a temporary usage? Does that mean nobody can build with a 900 feet of these things for the duration?
Through, Mr. Mayor, no, that wouldn't mean that, but see, the provincial policy statement itself says you can't create a new residential lot. It's prohibited under provincial policy. So in other words, retirement lots, all the kinds of lots that were created in the past are no longer permitted. So Mr. Amber would have the right to build on it, because basically, it's from, it would be from an existing dwelling.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think, I'm not talking about his lot, I'm talking about nearby properties.
The only time that anybody would be permitted to build a house today in agriculturally-designated zoned lands would be if it's a farm that's vacant at the present time.
Counselor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Jeff Watson, does Natural Resources Canada have a preference in where fireworks are stored, whether they prefer industrial zone or agricultural zones?
It's not a question of zoning, it's a question of the surrounding land uses. The biggest problem that they have is that they basically want these facilities away from dense urban areas. And that's a problem, is areas develop and get closer and closer to facilities like this. It's the same with an auto wrecker, for example. As urban development encroaches on them, they're less wanted and less desirable. And so basically, like an auto wrecker, same thing, they're forced out into the more rural areas because of that. And that's another kind of use where, you know, the official plan speaks to that, simply because there's no place else to go.
Deputy Mayor Malash.
I'm not sure if there's anybody else that wants to speak, but once we're done, I have a motion that I'd like to put on the floor.
If I may, I'd like to speak to the public out here. I spoke to the applicant, I spoke to, went around to some of their neighbors. It's a very, 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 it's a tough one. I'll be honest with you, it's very tough. I'm not sure if the residents out there realize that in the zoning, okay, of this here, commercially, that cannot be used for any other type of business. And I don't know if all the residents realize that. There's no other type of business that can open there. Because there was one resident said to me, what if he opens up, I think it was a machine shop or auto repair there? That type of business cannot, I want to make sure everybody knows this, that type of business cannot be there. This is the only type of business that can be there. And just, I want the public to be aware of that. And I'm telling you, it's a tough one, we're all struggling with it. Thank you.
My name is Frank Sololi, I'm the solicitor for the applicants. With respect to the shipping containers, I want to first quickly just talk about safety regarding the shipping containers. With respect to the eight shipping containers that we're requesting, five shipping containers will contain what are called professional fireworks, two will be for picking, and one will be for farm equipment. All other shipping containers will be removed from the property. Mr. Amber's business is strictly regulated by Natural Resources Canada. He must maintain minimum distances between shipping containers and the proposed pole barn, and between shipping containers and any residential dwellings. Mr. Amber cannot maintain his federal licenses without complying with these distances, and they are monitored annually by federal inspectors using a GPS system. The federal government insists that no bare steel is exposed. You can paint, however, in our case, Mr. Amber went over and above the minimum by insulating the containers with fire-rated spray foam that hardens and covers the steel interior. This eliminates the mold and mildew and condensation and keeps the temperatures cooler in the container. NRC also insists on approved locks, they are called puck locks, which cannot easily be tampered with. Most containers have two of these puck locks. NRC also insists on multiple air vents, which have been installed. This is normally inspected annually by an inspector from Ottawa. The storage building, if I can move on to that, and as Mr. Watson pointed out in his report, must be built according to very stringent federal government standards, in addition to the town's requirements. This building will never be open to the general public. The only things that will be in the storage building will be what are called consumer fireworks, shelving, and racking. With respect to security measures, there are currently three spy point cameras live, which send notification to Mr. Amber's cellphone and computer. Mr. Amber ordered five more cameras to increase coverage, which actually ironically arrived today. And I've already discussed the puck locks on the containers. Access to the property is restricted. Mr. Amber has installed a gate across the front drive access with two-inch tubing with a strong chain and a special shrouded lock. This will stop vehicular access. If the pole barn is approved by council, there will be outside cameras around this building for the full circumference of the building. Mr. Amber estimates 12 cameras for this purpose. There will be cameras and motion detectors inside the building, and there will be cameras and motion detectors around the shipping containers once the building is constructed, as then Mr. Amber will have a proper power source for same. There was some, at the public meeting, there was some concern about increased truck traffic. With respect to tractor-trailer type trucks, these trucks will possibly be coming to and leaving from the property from March through July. It is highly unusual for more than one to arrive on the same day. Mr. Amber estimates a total of 20 transport trips per season, March to July, which is approximately one tractor-trailer per week during this period. With respect to federal regulations, we've discussed some, and Mr. Watson correctly mentioned some in his report. But there are many others that Mr. Amber has to comply with. To be on the property or in the storage building, you must be on Mr. Amber's list of authorized persons. All persons handling fireworks are federally licensed supervisors. They are fully trained in the safe handling, storage, and transportation of dangerous Mr. Amber has a storage area of product and a picking area of product. When picking from a 40-foot container, there must be two exits, and from a 20-foot container, there must be one exit. There cannot be more than two people in a container at one time. There is, of course, no smoking. There is a set smoking area for staff well away from the containers. There is a set smoking area for staff well away from the containers. There is a no-sparking tools rule, and no lighters in pockets, et cetera. The storage building would have to be alarmed, as well as have the security cameras. Our federal government, in conjunction with United Nations international standards, has done many tests and studies on the safe storage of product in containers and in buildings. It is from this testing that the regulations and distances are set. Mr. Amber has never been charged or fined for any misconduct in over 30 years of business. Why are the applicants seeking this relief? Mr. Amber has not yet been asked by the town of Tecumseh to relocate his business, but his allowed storage, storage amounts were reduced when neighboring buildings were added. For example, the cost printing added 7,500 more square feet. Due to the required separation distances, Mr. Amber had to relocate his storage. When the town of Tecumseh planned to build Vista Academy School, it would have infringed on the remaining existing storage. Since Mr. Amber was in business for a long period of time and pre-existed the school, a deal was struck whereby a 1.7-acre buffer on school property was created. This was a no-go, no-play zone in which the kids could not play or go. In return, Mr. Amber agreed again to reduce his product stored. It was also suggested at the public hearing that Mr. Amber acted in a capricious and maybe a rogue manner when he moved the storage containers on the site, but this is not true. This was not done in isolation. There were meetings and discussions with the former fire chief. Diagrams and plans were also reviewed at that time. Mr. Amber's storage activities on this site are fully insured for $5 million per occurrence with Purvis Redman Limited, a highly reputable insurance company in existence since 1959. There will be no commercial activity undertaken on this site. The requested site-specific rezoning will simply permit the storage of product. There will be no retail activity whatsoever, including the leasing of storage containers. With respect to the airbags that were brought up at the public hearing, those airbags are legally covered by Mr. Amber's federal license. However, Mr. Amber has not destroyed one airbag since being asked by the town of Essex, as it was bothering some of the neighbors. When Mr. Amber first started with the destruction of airbags, he applied and received a permit from the Essex Fire Department. However, if this is an issue for council, Mr. Amber is prepared to remove all airbags from the property. The applicants are prepared to sit down with the town administration in order to come up with a site plan agreement, which could deal with whatever issues the town requires and hopefully address the neighbors' concerns. Things like relocation of the driveway to the east, the location of any permitted shipping containers, the location of the storage building, putting in a pond and fire hydrant at Mr. Amber's expense, planting of trees on the east boundary line at his expense, and required setbacks for the storage building from Sixth Concession Road, from the east lot line, and from the west lot line. In summary, my clients, if my client's application is approved, it will enhance the look of the property by the removal of 18 shipping containers. It will help maintain Mr. Amber's current level of employment. And as Mr. Watson correctly stated, his application meets all provincial policy provisions and the town of Essex's requirements regarding site-specific rezoning. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there any questions from council? Must be some questions. No questions at all? Okay, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Deputy Mayor Malash, you have a motion?
Sir? Thank you. Sir? I do, I do have a few, few things I'd like to say, if I may, your worship, please. I want to thank you for allowing us to do this again. One thing I'd like to address, Chris, or Counselor Van Nandt, is you're concerned about putting new houses on the property. I have a permit, I believe, already to put a new house on the property, and I'm back 300 meters. With the amount of merchandise kept in that building, by federal law, for safety reasons only, 120 meters from any building would suffice for any road. But I'm 300 meters. So that would allow anybody from their front line, which there's already houses east and west of me, and in the center of me, in place. I'm afraid the one immediately west can't go anywhere, the lot's not big enough. And the one west already has a nice house, so I don't see that as a current issue. I've spoke with some of the neighbors, I've spoke with my neighbor north of me, and his concern is if something did go bad in those containers, that his area would be part of a projectile. By federal engineers and scientists, it's physically impossible, but what would make him happy is me putting a berm up between him and I, right in front of the containers. And there's room there without touching any of the land that's being farmed or anything. When I remove the containers, there'll be a lot there where I can easily put a berm to stop that. Now, which is, if for some reason there was a problem, the blast hit it and goes straight up. You know, but there's, there's 2,000 feet from that point to his property, it's physically impossible to reach that far on the quantities being stored. These are not things taken lightly. These are treated throughout the world and tested constantly. We had an accident in Quebec about five or seven years ago. There was nobody around, including a highway, just off of the gentleman's property that was affected. Nobody. Because our distances in this country work. They do. And most of the things you'll see, that my distances are far greater than what the fedos ask. My safety policy's far greater than what the fedos ask. And that's how we've operated our entire life. Things are not done casually. And I realize that 10 minutes to defend 12 jobs and dozens of seasonal jobs is not a lot, so if you have any questions, please, I'd love to address them.
Thank you. Real quickly, if I can say, again, I talked to a lot of residents in the area, and to be honest with you, Victor, none of them want it, okay? But I did, I did say, if it did get approved tonight, if it did get approved, you're going to have a lot of restrictions and you're going to have to put a lot of, lot of different things in there to, to approve it. So I'll be right up front with you. It all depends which way council goes here, but they are not happy, okay? I'll be honest with you. But like I say, if it does get approved, there's going to be a lot of restrictions and a lot of, lot of orders on that property.
I have, I have no problem signing anything, stating that when we're done with fireworks or I decide to move out of there, that it goes back to the land it is. But I kind of like that property. I've done a lot of work in the tree lots and I continue to. And so that will never leave my, my family's.
Right. No, I just want to be fair with both parties here.
I understand that, sir. And I'm trying to actually do what it takes to make everybody happy. I know there's some things that I can't change, but I could put a building up there, that part would happen anyway. Is this what I'm storing?
Okay, thanks, Victor.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to make a motion and then I'd like to call it after we get a second there. But I'm going to, I'm going to go with the, the option that says, option two that Mr. Watson had in the report, where, whereby, we're not going to rezone, and what we'd like to do is, we'd like to have the, we'll give Mr. Amber some time to look for other options for storage, but I don't think at this point in time, I'll get that in the explanation, but I'll, what I'll just say is that we do not allow the storage of fireworks, that we, we do not rezone, and we give a certain amount of time for Mr. Amber to look for, for another source for storing his fireworks.
Deputy Mayor Malash, are you going to put a time limit on that?
We'll go with three years.
For Bjorkman's second, is that a comment?
Yeah. Okay, so I just want to go a little bit so that people understand why I'm moving forward on this motion. I, I feel for Mr. Amber, in the sense that he's trying to do the right thing, he's trying to, he's trying to put every provision in place that he possibly can to try and make this safe as he possibly can. And I think if the neighbors of this community were, didn't, were not so opposed to what was being done on that piece of property, I'd probably be less restrictive on, on, on what I'm putting forward in the motion. When I have this many people that, in the neighborhood, that do not want this to move forward, and if something were to happen, I know that we're putting every safeguard in place way over and above what the government is saying that they want to have in place, but if something were to happen and someone were injured, let's say, it doesn't even have to be fatally, but maimed, I would feel responsible for that happening.
Can I say something?
So, okay. So I, right now, all of, there's a lot of the people in this neighborhood that had lived there for years, much longer than Mr. Amber, before he decided to bring that business to that location. We're looking at putting a variance in place so that he can be allowed to stay. If Mr. Amber had come to me today and said, "This is what I want to do with the property," I probably would have said no. And not even probably, I know for sure I would have said no. Because I'm not interested in having something other than, that's something that's specifically agricultural for that area, because that's what it's zoned for. And for somebody to come there and, perhaps you didn't realize when you set up shop, that that's, that's, that this was going to happen, but nonetheless, it did happen. And there are people that have already lived in that area for a number of years that were not expecting this to happen, because they moved specifically into an area that said it's agricultural/regional. And this is something much more different than the agricultural uses that that property permits. So for that reason, I have to move forward on this motion. Somebody's going to win in this and somebody's going to lose in it, and I have to look at, if we have to change something specifically to make happen for that property so that it can be used for something different, but the majority of, of people in that area do not want that to happen, then I'm going to have to go with the majority of this. So that's, that's the reason why I'm putting this motion forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Bjorkman?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I think, to what the deputy mayor said, when we're looking at this, we have to look at this.
Excuse me for a second, please. Can you just shut your mics off, because it's...
We do have to look at this as it's a new application, a new business. This is not a business that we're aware that was happening in our community. It's a new business coming to us, and if somebody, again, as he said, came to us today and said, "I'm on the sixth, and decided, you know, I'm in the business and I want to keep explosives out in the back 40 of my property for the next foreseeable future," I'm sure we would all say, "No, that's, that's not agricultural, that's not resident, that's not what this area is for." The council of the day, eight years ago, didn't have that opportunity because it never came before them. They didn't know that this was going on. So the council of the day didn't know, although you did talk to the fire department, you did talk with the federal government, those, those kinds of things were happening, but the people who could allow fireworks storage were not informed. And that's the difference here. This is an agriculture, agricultural residential zoning where fireworks is not allowed. Today, eight years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. So somebody had to get permission to store fireworks. That permission was never granted. So now it comes forward to us, and we are the first council that's been asked, can we store fireworks out here on the Sixth Concession? Again, fire may have inspected for the proper storage and, and saw the drawings and how far they're back, but they did not have the authority to offer change to the zoning. So that zoning is still the same as it was then, it is today. Nextly, this is not an agricultural activity. The normal activities that are allowed in that area are agricultural. Now, you could say, "Well, what if somebody decided they're going to put a beef farm out there and they're going to start raising cattle?" They got to bring trucks in, they got to bring manure in, they're going to have all the things that go with that. Well, that's what you get when you live in an agricultural area. I moved from Windsor to a very agricultural area and I got my first manure season and I was very surprised at what I was living through. That was my life, that was my lesson. That's what, that's what you get when you come here. So those are the things that we expect, and that's what the residents out here expect, and that's why I'm supporting the deputy with this motion. The last question to everything, because a lot of things sometimes outweigh, you know, the old not-in-my-backyard syndrome. How does it benefit the community? Are we bringing jobs to the community? Are we bringing tax revenue to the community? Are we bringing, are we bringing positives to the people around us? Who benefits from this activity? And I don't see an overwhelming benefit versus the voice of my community. So for that reason, I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Van Nandt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to overlap a little bit with Mr. Bjorkman, Counselor Bjorkman. I think I'll support this motion, but only because I don't want this operation happening at all. I, I think maybe we should have, we could have gone another way, but this way might work. But, you know, this operation to me is only acceptable in a technical sense if you ignore all the people involved. I mean, sure, it might have puck locks, and Ottawa might be happy, but this is, this would be changing the character of a neighborhood, a neighborhood that didn't ask for this. You know, as Counselor Bjorkman was, was saying, you know, we, when we move out to these, to these rural neighborhoods, we, we know what to expect. I lived next to a trucking operation, it's very noisy, 24/7, and don't let anybody tell you that, "Oh, we'll only be arriving at business hours." That's not the way truckers work. They arrive at 3:00 AM, they leave at 4:30. But they were there first, they were there for 100 years. It's different taking something like that and plunking it into a neighborhood where those people never expected that, never had that in the bargain when they bought their properties. And that's what I think this is about. This is really about land usage. People go on about the danger of fireworks, I think that's a red herring. I mean, we all drive pickup trucks and SUVs, those things are rolling bombs with 20 gallons of gasoline in them. So I think the, the danger is really overstated, these things hardly ever blow up. The thing is, we, we have industrial parks and industrial areas for a reason, to separate these usages from residential and agricultural. And I just don't, I think this, this operation is more trouble than it's worth for us. And there seems to be this assumption on the part of the applicants and their supporters that the town of Essex is somehow obligated to make this work for them, but, but we aren't. You know, this is a resident of another community who's running a business in another community, employing people in another community, he wants us to solve his problem. I don't think it's our problem, I think we should make sure this doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, any other Counselor? Counselor Garry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the motion, I'm not too sure if it's clearing up this current situation. He still has, if we say on that motion that we're going to permit the, the use for three more years, then basically, will he have to remove the containers that he has on there now and still comply? Or can he continue to have 20-some on his property? So that's one thing I'm concerned about. And will we be able to still do some sort of an annual inspection of the property for the next three years?
Thank you, Counselor. Jeff, can you answer that, please?
Through, Mr. Mayor. As I say, the storage containers are grandfathered, he can keep them there. The difference is that at the end of this, this temporary zoning, he basically has to cease using them for the storage of fireworks. The question then is, what good are they beyond that point, really? But, but he can keep them there, but he has to use them for agricultural-related activities.
Go ahead. And just to follow, and with respect to inspection, can we impose annual inspection on that? Where a town official physically goes there annually and is... Where a town official physically goes there annually and inspects to make sure that the containers are being used for what they're supposed to be used for and that what he's doing out there is acceptable?
Fire Chief might be able to answer this.
Through your worship, through the fire code, we don't really have any jurisdiction to do it. We can go out and do inspections to make sure there's locks on the buildings, on all the containers, that's about all we could do, as well as the building personnel inspectors can do as well, but we don't have any jurisdiction to actually force our way into in checking the facilities. Nothing in the fire code would permit me to do that.
Thank you, Chief. To our C.O., I guess I'm going to ask him the question. Could we authorize, if that's going to be part of it, can we authorize Kevin Carter to go around and inspect? I'm sure we can. If he wants to answer.
I can answer, or Kevin can answer, but through your worship, I mean, through property standards, through bylaw enforcement, the zoning bylaw, you know, the chief building official enforces the zoning bylaw on behalf of the town. So, with respect to that, yes, he can inspect in terms of zoning and the application of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Bowman?
Just a comment, the actual storage of the fireworks out there, I have a problem with that. It's not too many years ago, you could buy explosives at the local hardware's. I can remember the time where you can go buy various amounts of dynamite to blow stumps on the farm. And as somebody else comments, fishing, but that wasn't a purpose, but the regulations back then strictly, or weren't near as strict as they are today, and the regulations under the storage of fireworks is extremely strict in how it's used and stored. So, I really don't have a problem with the storage of the fireworks on the property.
Chris, our C.O.
Through your worship, I just want to add, Fire Chief touched on this as well. The CBO is there to enforce the zoning bylaw, not to enforce how the fireworks are stored. That's through the federal regulation, the explosives, and we've been through that in terms of, you know, the types of locks and the setbacks and whatnot. So, the zoning bylaw is with respect to the storage of the fireworks on a property that is zoned or not zoned for them. So, that's what we can enforce. How it's stored is not our jurisdiction, right? In terms of the details and the act.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions? So, we're going to call the question. We had a, do you want to repeat your motion again? Can you repeat your motion?
Through you, Mr. Chair. As moved by Deputy Mayor Malash, seconded by Counselor Bjorkman, that planning report 2019-18 be received, that the presentation, together with the additional correspondence received in respect to the application, be received, and that council grant a temporary zoning permission to permit the retention of the existing storage containers for the storage of fireworks for up to three years, as referenced under option two in said planning report.
Through you, I, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought that the original motion said there would be no fireworks, but there would be fireworks for three years?
Three years.
I understand now.
All in favor of the motion? Post. It's Carrie. I feel for residents that you won tonight, but I also feel for Victor, and I would have supported it, and I did support it, to be honest with you. I just think, I- Wave order? Okay, thank you. Vote's done. 8.1 is Economic Development Officer's Report 2019-02, re Essex Tourism Events Fund Policy for receipt and that the Essex Tourism Events Fund Policy be approved.
Just a great policy, it's a great idea, get more people involved in picking up on events. The only thing that I was kind of surprised at was the amounts, and we'll see how it goes this year, but I think if we're going to put $30,000 into a fund to move things, I don't know we'll get it spent if we need to have, you know, twelve different groups do that. I think we could probably lower our limits from the, I'm not going to have it in my head now, is it 35,000 and up, and 35,000 and below? We'd probably knock that down a bit and maybe bump up what we're giving. It's a great incentive, it's great, it's there for advertising, it's to help people with their flyers and those kinds of things, but if anything, hopefully after this season, I'd like to see that grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Malash.
And I just wanted to say that I agree with what Counselor Bjorkman was saying there. I think the amounts may be too small, the amount that we're contributing, but we can probably look at that on a per-case basis as well. This is a good starting point, and then if we want to take a look at it and say, "Hey, you know what, if there's a case for giving more money than what's in there, then we possibly can." So, it's a great report. Thank you.
Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with the amounts. I mean, $1,000, I thought it was low when we first brought it forward. Volunteers donate a lot of time, and when they donate a lot of time, they want to get a little bit of money for it. So, something to watch out for, but if this council has appetite sooner rather than later to move the thousand, maybe to two thousand, I'd be all for that, because it's really hard to get volunteers to do a lot of paperwork. I felt like it was a lot of paperwork for just a thousand. A thousand dollars doesn't go very far anymore either. This is my two cents.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Nelson, could you highlight the report?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the fund is basically set up for nonprofit organizations to apply to elevate their event, whether that's through new marketing initiatives or adding something to their event that's going to really attract new visitors to the event. So, we have $1,000 set up for events of a $35,000 or less budget, and events that are over $35,000. It's going to be a $2,000 grant potentially. The way it's set up like that is because we only have $30,000 to play with this year, and it's really a pilot project, so we don't know how it's going to go. Hopefully, it's positive. If it is positive, and we get a lot of uptake and a lot of intake in the application process, then next year, in 2020, we can revisit the fund and potentially add some more budget to it so that we can up those grants as well.
Thank you, Nelson. Anybody else? All in favor? It's Carrie.
8.2 is Community Services 2019-01-4. Re: Request to waive noise bylaw, 690, and road closure for the Colchester Family Fun Event. That said report be received, that council approves waiving the noise bylaw during the times and dates indicated, and further, that council approve closing Jackson Street in Colchester between County Road 50 West and Sullivan Street between 11:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. as needed to accommodate the foot traffic.
All in favor? It's Carrie.
8.3, Community Services 2019-15. Re: Special Events Resource Team update for April for receipt. 8.4, Community Services 2019-17. Results of request for proposal for supply janitorial services. Said report be, said report for receipt and that council award the request for proposal to commercial cleaning services commencing May 1st, 2019.
All in favor? Please, Counselor Bjorkman and Counselor Benandall. Any questions on this one? All in favor? It's Carrie.
8.3, Community Services 2019-15. Re: Special Events Resource Team update for April for receipt. Results of request for proposal for supply janitorial services. Said report be, said report for receipt and that council award the request for proposal to commercial cleaning services commencing May 1st, 2019.
All in favor? Please. Counselor Bjorkman and Counselor Benandall. Any questions? All in favor? It's Carrie.
8.5, Community Services 2019-18. Re: Communities in Bloom Proclamation. That said report be received and that council proclaim Communities in Bloom Week in the Town of Essex for the week of May 6, 2019, by adopting the proposed resolution.
All in favor?
8.6 is the March 2019 Building Report, together with the Development Review, also for March. Said report and Development Review for receipt.
All in favor? Counselor Bjorkman, seconded. Counselor Benandall. Any questions on this, on here? All in favor? It's Carrie.
8.7 is Planning Report 2019-17. Re: The Essex Motel at 263 Talbot Street North. This is together with bylaw 1805 to adopt official plan amendment number seven and bylaw 1806 to amend bylaw 1037, the comprehensive zoning bylaw. Once again, through you, Mr. Chair, our policy planner, Jeff Watson, I understand, will speak to this report first. The proposed resolution is for the receipt of the report, for council to approve the amendment to permit multiple residential dwelling units at 263 Talbot, and accordingly, for bylaws 1805 and 1806 to receive three readings.
I was going to ask you anyways, Jeff, to speak on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council will recall, we pose to council the possibility of expanding the highway commercial uses to allow multiple residential and residential on top of existing commercial or new commercial. As you know, the county expressed concerns about that, but one of the bona fide proponents we had was Mr., the fellow who basically has acquired this property and who did want to go through the conversion to residential. So, what we did is we split this off from the larger picture, for now, and posed this zoning bylaw, the official plan amendment specifically for the Essex Motel. And what it would do is allow him to convert the ten motel units into ten affordable dwelling units. And also, we give him the option to expand in the future for, you know, for a like facility, because the property itself is quite large relative to what's on the property right now. So, basically, this is a site-specific official plan amendment and rezoning to accommodate affordable housing, something that we very much need, and it's workable at this location.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions to Jeff? Counselor Benandall.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Watson for sneaking some housing past the county.
We sure need it, that's for sure. All in favor? I need a motion first. Counselor Bowman and Counselor Garen. All in favor? It's Carrie. Thank you.
8.8 is Planning Report 2019-19. Re: Colchester Secondary Plan Discussion. Said report is for council's receipt and public information purposes, and once again, our policy planner, Jeff Watson, I believe, is looking to speak to this as well.
Thank you, Jeff. It's my night. Well, first, I want to say that my very first day on the job here was one afternoon, and Wayne Miller gave me the Colchester Secondary Plan that Marshall Macklin produced and said, "I want your opinion and recommendations for nine o'clock tomorrow morning to the steering committee." And that was when I was employed for a four-month contract, eleven years ago. So, here we go again. The, as you know, that there has been some interest in seeing more commercial development along Murdoch and Jackson in Colchester, but the zoning itself does not permit that as a right today. If you go to the map that shows the Colchester Secondary Plan, which is on page two, that was the plan that was approved by council back in 2009, when the official plan, the new official plan for Talbot was adopted and the secondary plan was incorporated into that. So, as you will see, as far as the official plan is concerned, this land is already zoned, or sorry, designated commercial. So, it's a question of zoning change. You don't need an official plan amendment to follow through on this. This report basically says that, acknowledges that, and if you look at the report itself, you'll see some suggestions for discussion when we take this to the public. The zoning that we're sort of contemplating would be the Commercial District 1.3, which already is established, and it's designed for a transitional location where you have a mix of residential and modest commercial, boutique-type commercial and that sort of thing. It doesn't permit drive-throughs, for example, but it does permit a lot of retail and takeout uses and that sort of thing, mixed in with existing residential. So, those are the kinds of things that we would probably pose to the public as part of a public review. The other part you see is Appendix A. That's actually refers to the Main Street designation, which is that area in red, which is, as they say, the commercial area of Colchester. And this lists the permitted uses under the official plan and the provisions that apply to it. But basically, what it's telling you is that, keep it modest, you know, it's not going to be big box retail, it's going to be the kind of thing that fits well in a village type of environment, and it would be designed and accommodated in that way. There are some concerns that we do want council to consider, though. For example, parking. The sites, the residential properties are small, we don't really want parking in the front yard, because number one, it's unsightly, and number two, it means a lot of driveway access points and conflicts with the sidewalk and pedestrians in the road. So, the, one thing I think council has to consider is a provision of parking probably, probably, you know, initiated by council itself on anchor properties. But there's also provisions in the zoning bylaw which allow for things like transitional parking, where lands can be acquired behind the commercial, on the side streets, you know, like one house at a time. And I use the example of Freed's on Ottawa Street in Windsor as an example, where Freed's is on Ottawa Street, but there's parking behind it, on the residential streets behind it. So, those are options that would be available to council or to private businesses as part of their expansion or development plans. So, those are the kinds of things that would be posed to the public. The other thing that the public has to consider, of course, is, are you in or are you out? And the only way to find that out is through a public meeting, and this is what Rita and I would be organizing as a first step, a public open house, to basically show that plan and to give people the points to consider in any rezoning application that follows that.
Thank you, Jeff. Just real quickly, I know Nelson was involved with this, too. We did have a, we did have a meeting with some people that were interested in maybe doing something, you know, in Colchester. I think this is an area that we really got to look at, and I think Counselor Bondi is really involved, too. This is an area that I think is really going to develop, and it all ties in with our tour- This is an area that I think is really going to develop and it all ties in with our tourism all the way along there so. But thanks for the report there Jeff. Any other questions from council? Nothing at all? Councilor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, you've been busy. So thank you for bringing this report forward in a, in a fast fashion. My only request is that when we have that public open house, that it either be at the Jackson Street Community Center in Harrow Arena because I think we can drum up a lot of interest if we, if we do it locally.
Thank you, Councilor. I agree, but I think the meeting should be at Colchester. Right at Colchester. Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Need a motion first. Yeah, motion. Councilor Bjorkman and Councilor Vanandall. All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
8.9 Legal and Legislative Services 2019-11. Re quarter revision for James Shepley Drain and this is together with Bylaw 1807 to provide for the James Shepley Drain. Said report be received and supported and that the following three members of the drainage board proceed due for Felix Wade Benzo and Dan Boudreaux will be appointed to sit as the quarter revision on May 6 and that Bylaw 1807 receive provisional passage this evening.
Have a mover please. Deputy Mayor Malash, Councilor Bjorkman. Any questions? All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
8.10 Legal and Legislative Services 2019-12. Quarter revision for the 8th Concession West Drain. That said report be received and supported, that the following three members of the drainage board be appointed Percy Dufour, Felix Wade Benzo and Dan Boudreaux to sit at the quarter revision for this drainage project on May 6 and that Bylaw 1808 receive provisional passage this evening.
Have a mover please. Deputy Mayor Malash, Councilor Verbi. Any questions on this one? All in favor? It's Kerry.
8.11 is Legal and Legislative Services 2019-13. Reagreement for Cemetery Superintendent and Caretaker Duties. And this is together with authorized bylaw 1804. That said report be received, that the agreement identified as Schedule 8 to the bylaw be approved and that Bylaw 1804 receive three readings this evening.
Mover please. Councilor Verbi, seconder. Councilor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
Item 9. Any reports from Youth Member Susie this evening?
Nothing new to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Item 10. Any updates from County Council?
Oh really? We didn't. Um, the only thing I can say is the public health is the nurses are still on strike. So that's about all I, I got to report. Anything Deputy Mayor?
Just one other issue. This Wednesday at County Council, we'll have our first glimpse of the road rationalization report, how they want to move forward with county roads, which county roads that they would like to have municipalities take back and which ones they may be adding to county responsibility from various municipalities. So the process, yeah, it's, it's covering the process. So we'll have more information to bring back. If anybody's interested in, in seeing more about it, we'll make sure that when the real guts of it come, come out, we'll make sure that all of our council members know if they want to attend that meeting just to hear the logic and the arguments that are going to come out of it.
Okay. I have nothing else.
11.1 Correspondence to receive, to be received. That all correspondence listed in 11.1 be received and where indicated to further share using suitable methods of communication.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to drop a comment on the letter from the Harrow Chamber, the Harrow and Colchester South Chamber on the 0% development fees. I know on May 1st council is having that meeting on the development fees charges, but in advance of that, I just was, was hoping council would pay a little bit of attention to the Harrow and Colchester South Chamber because the development fees, the 0% development fees in Ward 4 in Harrow expire this August. So this new term of council will have to have a decision to make on to whether extend that or not. And I really think that waiting till August may be pushing it a little bit. So after that May 1st meeting, I'm hoping that council will have that discussion on extending it even on a year-to-year basis. I'm hoping that there's appetite in council because I do not, I, I don't think we're going to lose the subdivisions, but I don't, I don't also want to risk it too, right? Like we're, we're getting some momentum and I want to make sure we see the shovels in the ground.
Thank you, Councilor. I agree 100% with what you're saying there. We do have lots of applications and a lot of approvals and I think that it should be extended for a year to make sure that those parties that's already applied and going through site plan, going through drainage and that should, it should carry on another year and make sure that they do get the 0% because we're looking at that growth in Harrow. Yep.
Just to clarify, the entire development charges expire on August 30th as well. So it's not just the waiving of the 0% in Harrow. Your entire study expires August 30th. So we have to finish that study and incorporate those changes into that study so that we get to that point regardless of wanting to push it another year, you have an entire new study coming.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just I know it was mentioned in the last meeting, but because it's here, the Share the Road Cycling, getting the bronze level bicycle friendly community award is just a tremendous thing for us. There's been a lot of time, effort, money, work put into our cycling infrastructure here and it's paying off and it's being recognized throughout the province. So those kinds of things are what get people that go biking for vacation looking for a destination. So that kind of thing is fantastic. Great work by our planning department, our infrastructure are just putting that all together. So very, big congratulations to the town for that.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions on any of those correspondence? Okay, all in favor of the correspondence? It's Kerry.
11.2.1 Essex Fund Fest Committee Member resignation for receipt and that the appropriate letter of thanks be sent.
Councilor Bowman, seconder. Councilor Garen. Any questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
11.2.2 Correspondence from the Town of Kingsville. That the correspondence from the Town of Kingsville ask and council to consider supporting their resolution that is calling on the federal government to take appropriate regulatory measures to expedite and improve the use of herbicides in aquatic environments by the 2019 growing season as well as the use of aerial control measures to control phragmides be received or received and supported and if so supported that the appropriate letter of support be sent.
Have a mover? Receive and, and support, seconder. Any questions on this one? Councilor Vanandall.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I don't know who can answer this here, but I have, we have a lot of phragmides around our property and on the, on the Essex side, it's already been treated. But on the Kingsville side, they've been letting it grow wild for years. So why are they sort of taking the lead and controlling it when it looks like we're the ones controlling it and they're not? I don't understand. Who knows about the control of this stuff?
I don't have an answer for that either. But just have one, one question on this real quickly. This, this product that they're using to control, is this same product that was approved over in Michigan? Does anybody know that here? No way? Okay. Thank you.
Committee Meeting Minutes. That all of the minutes listed in Agenda Item 12, together with any recommendations noted, be received, approved and adopted as circulated.
Councilor Bowman.
13.1 Under Financial 2019 Operating Expense Budget Variance Report. That said report be received.
Deputy Mayor Malash, seconder. Councilor Bondi. Any questions? All in favor? It's Kerry. I got my mic on.
13.2 Bank Payment Report for February 2019. That said report be ratified as submitted.
Mover please. Councilor Vanandall and Councilor Bowman. All in favor? It's Kerry.
Under Item 15, Notices of Motion. 15.1.1 The following notice of motion was first presented at the April 1st meeting and is being brought forward for consideration this evening. That council direct administration to develop an affordable municipal housing strategy due to the urgent crisis in Windsor and Essex County as moved by Councilor Bondi and would need a seconder.
I have a seconder. Councilor Garen. All in favor of that one? Okay, okay, Councilor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I do realize and I do respect the fact that council hasn't had a strategic planning session yet. We are really busy. We've had tours and we need to sit down and kind of streamline our priorities. That being said, housing in our area is in crisis mode. So I don't want to wait another six months until we really get into the meat and potatoes of what we want to do this term. Couple of Fridays ago, Councilor Verbi and our mayor, Mr. Snively, went to a workshop held by Tracy Ramsey and she had seven, five or six panelists. And the panelists were really informative and I've been talking to a few of them and gathering information and also been talking to a little bit of, of staff and other fellow counselors. So I do know that we do have some things in place for affordable housing and an affordable housing strategy. What we, what we may not know though is maybe some of the new councilors don't know about it, maybe some of, and new councilors bring along new supporters, right? So we have a whole new level in our town that's engaged. So I want to, you know, let's start off on the same page. So some of the things that we already do have are the secondary suites, right? But maybe, you know, I was talking to Councilor Verbi and she didn't necessarily even know that. So let's talk about those secondary suites and how we can, you know, again go out and market them. I have some links I can share with council later too. So things we can do. Let's talk about what we have and let's talk about what we can do. You know, we did pass that affordable housing development fees, waiving of development fees for affordable housing. Okay, so we put that on our list of what we have. Secondary suites on the list of what I have. The other things that, I'm just going to throw ideas out there. Prioritize permit approval, inspection fees waived, tax leans. This means like if a house comes up and it's in tax arrears, the municipality takes it over and partners with Habitat for Humanity and that becomes a family home. Just, just different ideas. Incentives to developers to create affordable housing stock. For example, somebody comes to us and they want to build 57 apartment buildings and they want their development fees waived. We say, "Okay, we'll, we'll meet you halfway, but 10% of those apartments have to be affordable." Just different ideas so that we can stimulate different discussions. So another thing is, you know, we've been talking a lot about that local comprehensive plan to show how we can pair residential and commercial in our core. And I know we said we want to put that in our 2020 budget. Maybe council wants to talk about that 50,000 contingency fund and maybe jumping on that local comprehensive plan a little sooner. Because that plan is going to say, "Okay, we can build commercial here and residential here." And that's going to open up housing too. We all know that four years on a term goes by fast and you spend two years talking about what you want to do, one year actually doing it and then the next year is campaigning. So I really want to say, okay, like if this council, do we see some things that we can easily do to focus on affordable housing? This past week, I used to get calls about cats not being fixed, feral cats. This week it got calls about housing. I got calls, I got a mom and two children, I got two moms and their kids, they need a house. And then I got a husband and wife with their two kids. All in, all in this week. And I was like, this is the third one. Everybody's messaging me that they need housing. I have a rental, I put it on Facebook because in 15 minutes I have like 10 people interested. It is out of control, the lack of housing and, and not just affordable housing, but specifically affordable, but housing in general. When housing in general is pinched, affordable housing is even pinched even more. So you know, we talked with our planners the other day at the hotel rezoning. What's affordable? Can we look at redefining that? Can this council say that this is something that they, they want to work on? Can we just, today I just, I'm hoping that council wants to report to say, "Okay, this is what we, this is what we're doing. Let's market what we're doing and this is what we can easily do that's maybe free and maybe this is what we, what we can do that maybe needs some money." So then that comes back to budget and council strategizing session. Just looking out of that high-level conversation to say, "Hey, let's kickstart it a little bit." I don't want to wait another six months.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else on council? Councilor Bjorkman.
Thank you through your worship. I think that's a great idea, Councilor Bondi. We are talking a lot about when we're getting with developers and talking with them, the first thing is, is this affordable housing? It's like, that's the question we ask. But to your point of housing, just housing, we need housing. We are starting to attract more developers. We're starting to attract more in the, in the Harrow area with the, with the discounts that we have. And we've got a, a number, I've got three friends that are actually moving out of Windsor and they're building in Essex right now, which is fantastic, but they're having trouble finding lots. These lots are being snapped up as they're being developed. So I, I think it's a great idea to do an inventory for council of the things that we're doing and what we may be able to do. Just so that it's a good information for us to have as we're talking to people, as we're all, we're their best promoters for this town. And anybody that wants to know something about, they're asking us, they're calling us. So to have those tools in our hands is a great idea. So I think it's a, it's a great request.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else? All in favor? It's Kerry.
Item 16. Any reports and announcements from the council members this evening?
Deputy Mayor Malash? Nothing. Councilor Garen? Nothing. Councilor Verbi?
Yes, thank you through you, your worship. First thing I just want to mention is that like tomorrow night, the Optimists are having appreciation night. I know our CEO, myself and some others are going to be serving the young people that are being acknowledged for all the volunteer work they do in the community. So I just want to put a shout out to all those young people and to the Optimist Club for making this really important night for them so that they understand how valuable they are to the community and the volunteer work. Also, I just want to mention that with the holiday weekend coming, with Easter coming, we have a lot of events in the community and I hope there's a lot of family-friendly events that I hope people can attend, like the Squirex McGregor are having an egg hunt. There's the annual hunt over at the public school with hot dogs for the family on Saturday. A lot of service clubs and churches in the community are doing fish fries so we can get out and support some of them and everybody just have a happy Easter weekend. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Bjorkman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as, as a report, everybody knows the weather that we've been having lately, the winds, the, the lake levels, we're, we're getting a lot of calls. I've seen Councilor Bondi having notes as well with regard to shoreline protection and shorelines that are just getting pummeled right now. As a, as a town, there's really nothing that we can do for residents on private property. Those are, you know, roads we've gone down before. But there did used to be a program with the provincial government for shoreline protection and it was the shoreline protection program that allowed towns to help make low-interest loans to property owners that would be able to be invested into their break walls and be able to pay that back over a certain amount of time at a low rate. So it's something that we've already approached our, our provincial reps with and it's something that we need to continue to do. But I think it's important that, you know, residents that are out there understand that we, we know this is going on, we are getting those calls and we have made that, that step up. But I think we need to continue to up our game with that and try to partner with some of our other towns perhaps in the area, get together and really make a push to get something done because it's, the lake's going to do what the lake's going to do. And unfortunately, that's, that's one of the things about living there. But if there's something we can do as a collaborative, we need to reach out and do those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Just to add to that, when you and I were on IRCA, we were pushing IRCA to push senior levels of government to do some funding. Any other questions? Councilor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report on a little issue that I've been working on and I think it's success to say that council and administration are going to have a meeting about the gore in the 8th. For those of you that follow me on social media, I've been driving the roads quite a bit and some of us up here may have different opinions about the roads, but I've been here a while and I really would like council to have an education session about different road products and, and what we really can do because I've spent a lot of time getting complaints and I know the roads were just patched last week, so I don't know if that was the town job or if it was the contractors, but I really think that council needs to have that session on roads because that's where we spend a lot of our money and then we can go forward and decide on the specs of our tenders and whether we
and decide on the specs of our tenders and whether we still want to award roads like the 8th concession in the Gore Road with Cold World recycled. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, and administration's well aware of that, and we are going to get together with administration, go through that. Thank you. Oh, pardon me. Counselor Vanadon.
Well, I just want to answer the previous one. I wasn't going to say anything, but there was such a kerfuffle on social media about this pothole. I mean, shit, we should give that thing a name or something. Everyone's talking about that one pothole. I think it's a big overreaction. I think those roads were done very well. I think we had a very hard winter, we had really hard freezing, and that's what happens in the spring in Canada, is you get potholes. And I don't understand why we're overreacting to one that has a picture taken posted on Facebook. And I don't think that's a reason why this contractor should never get another road job. I've driven that road repeatedly after all these complaints, and I think it's a very good, very good road.
Counselor Vanadon, okay, yeah. Okay, Counselor Bowman?
Just a quick comment on, you mentioned about the flooding along the lake. The water levels are as high now as they've been in years, and it looks like it's projected it's going to stay that way for a while, so it's an issue we're going to deal with over the next few years, so the more pressure we do put on the provincial government, and that's where the funding is coming from, and I believe the monies for those loans have ceased, so I don't think they're out there anymore. So, you know, any, obviously, funding has to be generated by the province, but when it comes, I don't know.
Thank you, Counselor. I have no report, so take your time. Item 17.1, Bylaws For Third and Final Reading, Bylaw 1800, the confirming bylaw from the April 1 regular council meeting. Mover, Counselor Verbeek, seconder, and then Counselor Bowman. All in favor? It's Gary. Bylaw 1802, Being a Bylaw to Provide for the Issue of Deventures for Works Completed for Drains, for three readings this evening. Counselor Bjorkman and Counselor Bowman, all in favor? It's Gary. Bylaw 1809, Being a Bylaw to Raise Money to Aid in the Construction of Drainage Works Under the Tile Drainage Act, for three readings this evening. Mover, Counselor Bjorkman and Counselor Garen, all in favor? It's Gary. Bylaw 1811, Being a Bylaw to Provide for the Issue of Deventures for Works Completed for Drains. Mover, Counselor Bondi and Counselor Vanadon, all in favor? It's Gary. And Bylaw 1810, Being a Bylaw to Confirm the Proceedings of this April 15 regular council meeting for two readings. Counselor Bowman and Counselor Verbeek, all in favor? It's Gary. And now, just looking for a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Malash and Counselor Garen, all in favor? It's Gary. Thank you.